Thank you everyone for coming. Now that we've started just a little bit late. Appreciate it. We had a involved workshop session that went a little bit long. But everything's underway. Starting this evening, we'll first ask if there's any citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda that they'd like to scan and address the City Council. Anyone who would like to address the City Council about items not on tonight's agenda, please.
Tracy Brooks, 507 Lindell Lane, Maroon Springs, Kansas. Couple of weeks ago, what came before this, or four weeks ago, it came before, the City Council requested a permit for closure of the street here in front of the church and between the community center. You guys were so gracious to give us that. During the BBS program, someone got an idea to make a card for the City Council.
That's cool.
And most all the participants of the BBS signed it. There are several that did not sign, but a lot of them signed it. And I wanted to come present that to the City Council today. I don't know what you'll do with it, but you can at least pass around once, look at all the neat little stuff and go from there. But we are very grateful for the city working with us this year with our BBS. And this is just a small token. I tried to be good to make cookies for you guys tonight, but we didn't get that done. Maybe next time, okay?
All right. Good.
Probably a good thing that you didn't try to mail it.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll see if we can get that in a display case somewhere with Parks and Rec or something. Yeah, that sounds good. Anyone else that'd like to address the City Council on tonight's open record about items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go right on into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the July 15th City Council Special Meeting, minutes of the July 8th City Council Meeting, claims for city operation, and claims for public housing authority. Anything to be pulled by the citizens, city staff, questions or clarifications from the council, and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Vote please.
Wood? Yes. Sorry. Stevens?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Reese?
Oh, yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto our regular meeting, and the first of which is a resolution to dispose of public housing authority equipment.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm just in PHA. So this is pretty straightforward. We just per hub regulations have to have a resolution to dispose of items that we don't use anymore. All this tin and that software, they come that shouldn't have been on in the first place. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add from citizens? Understand? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a resolution to dispose of PHA equipment.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here.
No.
It's very good that there are situations in place to deal with this.
I agree.
I didn't know they had airless spurs in 1977.
I'd say it's had its life.
Nothing, nothing here.
Very good. Seeing nothing. Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck with your sale. Onto our next item, K-9 and E parking lot.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just seen with Parks and Rec. The K-9 and E parking lot is complete. It's still a long time due to the weather, but it's finally ready. So here for approval, take seconds and payment.
Very good. Thank you. Anything to add from the citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, no others staff? You entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the K-9 and E parking lot project and approve final payment of $32,762 to McConnell and Associates.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here.
Just an observation. I walk past it quite often, and the park does get used quite a bit. And I even went by it at night on the way here to see how it looked, and there was people in that park using it some. And using the parking lot, I doubt.
Both parties intended to go.
That's great. Good job.
It's a wonderful thing.
Definitely a job. Thank you very much. Nothing else? Vote please.
Gerly?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item number three, Shite Water Lane Replacement Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Frank Abert, Public Works Director. So the Shite Water Lane Project, which replaced the deficient water line with a 12-inch water lane, is now completed. And we have approximately five change orders associated with the project. We did actually come in under the projected cost. The advantage of this particular improvement really is twofold. One is that it completes a link within our water systems connecting the 12-inch to the other 12-inch. And that in itself is a pretty big deal. The second thing is it provides adequate fire flows to at least two businesses that I'm aware of down there, probably a third. And so that, of course, is a very good thing. In addition to that, it sort of sets the stage, to me, future fire flow improvements over in that particular area as well, as we're kind of outlined with this study that we just got done, this management study of our water system. With that, I entertain any questions, but request your approval of the change orders along with the final payment on the project to close it out.
Very good. Anything to add from the citizens? Questions? No others staff? I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the change order in the amount of $85,753.18 and approve final payment to our previous mechanical contractors to accept the project as complete at a total construction cost of $412,637.18.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, and we'll start with the comments. Questions?
On the change orders, there's several of them. Was it because they found, once they got in, that some of the lines were deteriorated or such, they ended up having to do additional work?
It was a combination of that and running across several, several service lines and things that nobody knew existed. Unfortunately, we're going to work a little harder at that when we do the next project. Probably do some preliminary excavation. There was fire lines as well as service lines.
And one additional question in regards to the work overall. I noticed the spurs that go into Southwest Steel. Now, are those not going to be reconnected? Because it looked like they connected the rail lines off the spur prior to getting to the street. But unlike CSM, I notice those didn't get reconnected. So I didn't know if those were just, were going to abandon those completely going into Southwest Steel?
That wasn't part of our project. As far as I know, we didn't change anything, but there must have been some discussions with Southwest Steel.
Okay, so what you're saying is Southwest Steel may have said no reason to read?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure if those were ever removed as part of the project. There was one rail track that we poured on, and I think the other one, we didn't need to pour on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that those weren't left out there, and they should have been.
Yeah. That line is mostly used as kind of an overflow line, more or less. I don't know if the train has really gone in this Southwest Steel sometime, and then going into CSF Bakery as well. I'm not sure that gets used, but I'm not sure about its frequency either. But again, I don't know.
Well, I know the one you see isn't bakery issues.
Yeah. I don't know if there was anything removed from Southwest Steel or any part of that track as part of this project.
Okay.
I'm not sure either.
Well, I know they did take those lines off, out. You know, you can see where it ends. The spur ends then where the water line is, and then, of course, what's in the street. So it was completely removed in those two locations. So maybe a case of, like you said, Southwest Steel said, you don't need to hook that up.
I know there's one of the lines we had to talk about.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's.
As far as water service.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't overlooked and big left.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions? Vote please.
Reese?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item number four, Transit Guest Tax Rate Increase.
Amber Matilla? The transit guest rate was set in 2004 at 4%. We haven't raised it since then. This is a tax on lodging that is paid for by guests and hotels, and it's for financing tourism activities. And the state statutes define out what tourism activities are, and it's the Convention in Tourism Promotion, including activities to attract visitors to the community in support of those activities and organizations, which encourage increased lodging. The tourism community discussed this rate increase and approved the recommendation to raise the rate to 6%. If adopted, this will bring us up closer to many neighboring cities. It ranges anywhere from a proportional percent up to 9%. Around this area, it's typically between 6 and 8. There's a few that are as high as 9. But we thought 6 was a good start for now, and we can look into it a few years down the road if we'd like. But if adopted, this is going to affect October 1st, and this is included in 2020 budget. This rate increase was added into that.
If it's a 50% increase, what does that generate? How much? What are we talking about?
I think we estimated last year to bring in $78,000, and this next year, we're estimating to bring in $115,000 with a 6%.
This is done all over the country, right? Trans.
I know it's popular, I mean, it's a Kansas transit guest tax, but I know that other states have as well.
So what is the argument of as high as 11%, 12%?
Anything else from the staff? Citizens? Now I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the charter ordinance raising the transit guest tax to a rate to 6%.
Very good. Second question. Oh, second. He's seconded. He's seconded.
Okay, there we go. Give it to her.
Thirds and fourths. We'll start over here.
You mentioned about 11%. And what was interesting is you do have some cities where the county, as well as the city and the county, both, and they get up to 12% with a few of them.
Thank you for putting all the comparative stuff in there.
Yeah, that was great.
On a snapshot look at it.
Do we have any stipulations for or against Airbnb use?
We do not have the zoning regulations set in place to have Airbnb at this time. We can add it to our regulations and add it to our licensing and permits, but at this time, we do not have Airbnb regulations. So there would not be a lot of difference.
Ah, thank you. Very good. She was anticipating your question.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Nothing? Seeing nothing else? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number five, Government Services Center Change Order for Wheelchair Lift.
Amber Matilla?
Whoa!
Sorry. I was ahead of it. This is for wheelchair lift for this back hallway back here in this building. Eventually, this back parking lot needs to be closed off the majority of the project, and this lift will allow ADA access down into this lower level. Without ADA access, we would have to move all services that are currently held in this level of the building. We have to have, we have to keep ADA accessibility, so we wouldn't be able to rent out the sunflower room either. We have to find a new place for court. There are two lifts in your packet. Staff recommends the one that you see for $50,195.20. That one does not have to have staff assist with the lift. We can, we'll be here. But a patron can use it on their own, and it will also fit a scooter. The other lift, you'd have to just do wheelchair, get out of it, leave your scooter upstairs, and ride the lift down. So this one's more accommodating as well. The other one, staff would also have to assist the patron every time the lift needs to be used. I think that's all I have. This change order, we're going to current project total to $14,110,482.20. And we do have a representative here that can answer any questions. The lift for projects, if need.
About which project? The lift or the elevator?
The lift or the project.
Thank you. Any, anything else from the staff? Citizens?
Are we talking for the steps up here or back here? This step's right outside this wall, the back hallway.
The back hallway.
The ones that are straight as opposed to ones that curve. Correct. Right behind that door. Goes into the senior center.
Seeing nothing, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a change order for the Government Services Center project for a cost not to exceed $50,195.26.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll back over to the staff.
Amber, is this one that we're talking about here? Looks like a tractor.
No. It's the other one in your pocket.
Okay. I was wondering, I was looking at that, and I'm seeing somebody behind him, and I'm going, okay.
It's the platform one.
Okay.
Anything else?
Was there nothing in the original bid for anything?
Not for access down to this level. It was thought that we could keep access in the back for as long as possible, but due to the retaining wall on the back side of that parking lot, it is inevitable to leave that parking lot open. There could be structural issues.
We discovered the need to shore the back side of the community center. Thus, the duration of the shutdown was extended to the full length of the project, basically. And we did, I'll add that, we did look into some temporary solutions, and because of the overall rise in the length of the ramp that would be required, it amounted to about the same cost for the duration that we're talking about to rent it. So at least this way, you would have a permanent ADA access solution in place at the first.
I just have one, I'm going to put everybody on the spot here a little bit. Something that is, wasn't part of the GSC Center, and it's not even being put in that building, it's sitting in here. I noticed that for just obtaining some bids, we're looking at spending $4,500 for KBS to go get bids. Because if you look at the bid from then, there's a KBS fee on the side of 10%, $4,500. And I'm just curious, the reasoning behind that.
Well, as part of any general contractor management fee, they would charge, you know, their fees on top of the scope of work. But to your point, you know, you could contract directly with a company and exclude that, but then you would be responsible for taking on the management. So this would be a way to sort of push all of the responsibility of overseeing the project on KBS.
What's the installation date on this?
Do you know how long the installation date?
We would have to go to KBS, but I mean, as soon as it's approved, I'm guessing anywhere from a week to two weeks before we did, you know, begin to see any activity on it, because we'd have to get a shop drawing and review it.
This is something we have ability now, right?
We will need it twice before you tonight, because we need a decision in order to keep the project on schedule. But it's, we and the contractor factored in the order time and the installation.
Anything else? Seeing none, vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Onto item number six, Government Services Center Alternatives. Alternates. Again?
This is the two alternates that are left on the project that were included with the bid, the base bid. As you'll remember, you approved the limestone coping, it's on the cross of the top of the building. These are the ones to replace the existing windows on the lower level. That's a cost not to exceed $168,678. And we did confirm that it could be eligible for the historic tax credit because bringing it back to what it was originally built as. I do, windows do not comply with that currently. The other alternate is to install electrified switch glass instead of the motorized mechanisms at Roosevelt Shades over the port area going from the hallway over to the recording doctor room area. Staff did look at, or request SFS look at the difference between the switch film and the switch glass. The switch film is sandwiched between two pieces of glass that are protected. The switch film, while it is less costly, if it just gets a small scratch on it, it'll take a whole panel off. So it'd be good if it were in a place where there'd be nobody on the other side ever. But this, there's doors there. It's not the best option to keep it down there.
Very good. Thank you. Anything from the, add from staff? Citizens? Questions, concerns? Seeing none, I entertain a motion on the first action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve alternate number two to replace existing windows for a cost not to exceed $168,678.
Seconded. So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here.
Well, I do, I just want to ask the staff to relay again to us what to, since we don't have a lot in here on alternate number two. What is the advantage of doing those windows now versus when they hit their normal end of life cycle, of lifetime?
One of the things we looked at with that was just the operability of the windows, and right now, most of them are very hard to open. There's the concept of all the windows in the building that are life cycle lining up and under the same warranty. Other than that, your question is, it's a good one. Those are the two advantages. Otherwise, you could wait until the end of the life cycle of the existing windows. To the credit of Bonner Springs, you have a great library with all the yearbooks. So when we took this to the state Historic Preservation Office, they were asking those questions as well, and really, they wouldn't allow us to replace a credited, a previously credited project without pointing out that with yearbook photo evidence that those were not historic accurate. So you would be gaining, so 33 of the 44 windows were not, did not have the light configuration that was represented in the yearbook photos. So that was the reason. So whether that's a benefit from a maintenance perspective is questionable, but at least historically, you'd be, you know, fulfilling that, or checking that box.
Of the 44, you have any of them being opable or inopable or axle-free or?
All the ones that I, I don't, I can't say I checked every single one, but walking through the building, I tried to muscle a few open, and it was, it was tough for me, so. And then a couple of them are actually broken, so we end up needing to replace the glass.
From the original bid, no windows were being replaced?
From the, basically from the brick up, we were doing complete replacement, but from the brick, or for the stone part portion, those windows were previously replaced. So we were considering that in alternate.
And you said that they could qualify for the tax credit, or they would?
They would be submitted for historic tax credit.
Okay, but they're submitted? I mean, they're approved, or is that, I don't play symmetries. The percentage, they qualify for historic tax credits. The one thing that's still unknown in the entire project is the total amount. So they could be up to 25% eligible, but again, we won't know that until we get to actually selling those credits and going through that process. So again, the project, that was sort of the unknown going into this, was that they had already been replaced roughly 15 years ago, I believe, right there, somewhere around there. So again, these windows are kind of at the end of their lifespan anyway. So again, that was somewhat of a thought process in terms of trying to get all this stuff, you know, on one warranty schedule is that within five, 10 years' time anyway, we're looking at probably having to replace these windows. So then every window will be replaced? Every window, yeah. Every window. With $170,000? No. No, this is just the, this is just the windows from the stone down. So this is two floors of the building. The other ones were already in the bits, so all went erect. So this is just, yeah. So this cost is only for the two floors of windows from the stone down.
Obviously, costs will go up with time, but is there any additional savings to do them now versus waiting for them to be acquired?
Well, I guess that's one advantage I didn't list is if you replace the windows now, it's, it's going to be more cost prohibitive to do it in the future versus doing everything before all the finishes are in place surrounding the windows that are there.
I have a question, but Sean took me on a walkthrough right after all the demo, and it was pretty wild how some of the windows were installed. So I'll mention from the construction side, it's going to be a lot easier for these guys to be able to frame their window properly with how horrible it sounded those windows were installed. I mean, you had 68 inches of like hunk job kind of construction that the windows were just set in sometimes. So it saves a lot on drywalling, framing, electrical, and everything that's involved.
If I can steal Jeff's statement that he made tonight, it makes a lot of sense. We're completely redoing the whole building. We're putting all this in. Why would we do everything and keep 10-year-old windows? Everything we're doing. And that means, Jeff, I bet you're spot on on that. And I think that if we're going to do this, let's do it and do it right. I agree with what you said. It would definitely be more expensive later on, and then having to go back through and take stuff out that they had just initially put in, you know, years before, that doesn't make any sense. So hate to pay it, but I thought we're going to do this, and we've got a good building, good community, let's do it and do it right the first time.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing nothing else? I'd like to vote please on act number one, which was the motion to approve alternate two to replace the existing windows for a cost not to exceed $168,678.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. Onto our next action, which is to, I would entertain a motion concerning the second action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to deny alternate number three to install switch glass for a cost not to exceed eighty-three thousand sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Second?
Move consecutive questions, concerns, comments. We'll start down here on this side, I think. Nope, this side. Sorry, I don't make a point.
I know we're looking at cost. Um, I think Mark, Councilman Kip was, uh, brought this up in the past. I know Councilman Stevens has, I think everybody has, but on something like this, uh, we have curtains that are already in. It's in the, in the initial and, um, I just didn't see this as something that would be beneficial and, um, not, it would not be smart.
Just because of their shades.
Their shades, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think that would, and besides, never mind. Very good. Thank you. Sir?
Uh, as many have said, I think it is good to be prudent and watch some of the costs and the things I've tried to lobby for, but this one is just, it's a need to have, but not very necessary.
Were the Mecca shades included in the original overall? We went through this exact process at my office with these exact products and I have both switch glass and Mecca shades. The switch glass is somewhat new to the market, so there's not a lot of history on maintenance costs and things like that. And we saw firsthand how fragile it is just installing one of the boardroom doors. They set it down wrong and it shattered. And then we had to replace the whole door unit. Uh, it's a neat toy. I love it on the boardroom, but it's also an expensive toy. And the Mecca shades we have are, are both mechanized and manual depending on where they are. They serve the purpose. They seem to work very well. They're aesthetically pleasing. Uh, I also talked to the designer about the film and it's even newer than the switch glass. It doesn't have any particular history behind this or one or the other. So, um, the only thing that I got out of the discussion with the designer was that the, the switch class representative company here in Kansas City was somewhat hard to work with and.
Very good.
And there are still some ongoing issues with the warranty surrounding the, the installation that we have. So, um, that's, if that's what I knew asking about it and why I voted to deny.
Sheep.
First of all, I want to thank staff. I brought it up about the possibility of switching in. I'm glad you were, took, were able to find some information. It wasn't good information, but at least you took the time and I appreciate that. Um, secondly, I, I think it's just, it goes back to what, uh, Council Shannon asked, uh, the city manager two weeks ago about really the, the purpose that it's supposed to serve. What's the main difference? And the main difference is the switch glass was neat. I personally don't see spending eighty-three thousand dollars for neat.
And just to clarify, we're very interested in that.
That's the current motion on force to deny it.
Anything else? So, uh, I would like to go ahead and ask for a motion on, I'm sorry, a vote on a motion that, uh, we deny alternate number three to install the switch glass for a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand sixty-five dollars and forty-three cents.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes. When you put that, thank you.
Onto item number seven, Bonner Crossing's Development Agreement.
That's my last one. Do you have before you development agreement for phase one of Bonner Crossing? This is the northern portion of the Bonner Crossing development. I included exhibit C instead of phasing. Um, a lot of it will happen simultaneously, but there will be a separate development agreement for the fortune and yellow for phase two for the majority of the residential pieces. Um, exhibit B, and there's some blanks in there for the construction plans and exhibit B, uh, will be included and those blanks will be filled in as soon as those construction plans are finalized. Um, they're, they're with our engineer and their engineer now. They're discussing them. They've turned in their final flat. So everything's good now. It's just the small little things that they need to smooth out. Um, so there's no big hiccups with any of the construction plans. Um, it includes the construction expenses that developer, um, is required to pay as to bring on our engineer to make sure that all of the infrastructure is installed in accordance with the regulations and group plans. Um, and then it lays out all the development responsibility for the fall within our expectations. This is a pretty standard development agreement. They're really working on remediation from our standard agreement.
Very good. Anything else to add? Seeing none. Anything from the citizens?
Versus at vocation.
Bonner Crossing is at a, the southwest corner of one hundred and eighteenth and State Avenue. Any others? Seeing none. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the development agreement for phase one of Bonner Springs, uh, Bonner Crossing and authorize staff to sign the agreement.
Second? Move consecutive, um, questions, concerns, comments. We'll start over here with counsel three.
Not specifically.
The campus includes dorms. Is it educational environment?
Um, the, the top portion of paint is the educational piece of it. Um, I don't think they're including dorms anymore, but there, there'll be several levels of apartment and housing options and some of those are intended for.
Not the residential portion.
Mm-hmm, not the residential portion.
So what types of arts are we anticipating?
So the, the project is, um, dealing with audio visual performance arts, um, esports. So lots of the gaming performing arts. Um, there's a, obviously a, um, large concert pavilion. So there will be large concert, um, type events.
Camp Studios.
Camp Studios, things of that nature.
Coral.
Coral.
So what draws people into this location? Is it an established organization that people are a part of and will come in or is it going to be through the lines of marketing to new students and participants?
So there are.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around who's coming into this.
So the, the group, the Velocity Arts Group is, um, has done, had some success with a operation in Georgia.
In Atlanta.
In Atlanta, um, where they see a lot of Midwestern students coming down to that facility. So they're capturing a market where they think they're going to have, they're going to be able to capture, um, students within the Midwest region much more easily. And then drawing, drawing in, um, you know, national, international acts to support the performances.
Design is a short term or a long term commitment by the students?
Long term. Oh, by the students? Um, I don't know what the educational, it's a.
They said it'd be, there'd be a series of two-year degrees and four-year degrees and, and also there's community access. They'll be part of it. So it'll be a mix.
I love the idea.
On the other improvements, uh, B, under the utilities, it says everything's being dropped underground. Are you guys staging for fiber or at least several fiber loops while doing this?
They're currently working through, um, who the providers would be.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I figured as much.
Yeah.
Are you guys, are you guys just going to drop, drop black fiber no matter what?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, there's going to be a lot of bandwidth needed to do what they need to do.
You gotta get it, sir.
They're, they're intuitively understanding of what that need will be.
Okay. Are you guys doing this or allowing connection points from residential areas as well?
Yeah, all infrastructure will have to come through basically the arts entertainment campus to get to the residential components or at least on the peripheral, like the edges. Yeah.
Gotcha.
It's the, the, the option is to share all of that, um, some of that cost between the two ownership groups.
Uh, okay, cool. Um, I have one other with the utilities. I guess it might be more towards Amber. Are we doing a development or a, I guess a franchise agreement with UG or Water?
Um, BPU, there's a current agreement in place for Water. We're working with UG for Seward.
Okay, so they'll be, this is giving us a franchise fee off of this development or?
No, um, they'll be a connection fee that the developer will pay and then after the connection, it's essentially our infrastructure.
Okay, so we will still own all the pipes and the structure from this?
Right, so we're only.
Scared it to us.
Yeah, we're only making a connection, um, to both one of, both of those utilities, but we're still going to be the ones servicing, billing, maintaining.
Yeah. Okay, and then we're just purchasing at the moment?
Yeah, we're basically purchasing the right to connect into those other two utility systems. So there's that connection fee, um, cost that's included in that development agreement, which would just be passed along through the developer to make that. But again, the city of Bonner would still have to provide those typical city services there and everywhere else.
We have those in the local agreements in place.
Those we have.
Good job, man. Nothing further. Thank you.
Sir?
I'd like to tell them that.
Seeing nothing else? A vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, it's another step along the way. Congratulations and welcome again to Bonner.
Thank you.
Onto item number eight. Um, approve a notice of a budget hearing and schedule public hearings for adoption of the twenty-twenty Bonner Springs budget. Stack.
Senate Council, Tilly Plant Finance Director. Tonight you have the budget hearing notice, which will be published in the paper upon approval. It sets the public hearing for Monday, August twelfth, for the twenty-twenty budget hearing. And there are three twenty-nineteen budget amendments, the street fund, the water fund, and the store fund. In publishing this, you're setting a maximum expenditure by funds. So at the hearing, you can't raise the expenditures, but you can lower them. This, uh, budget, based on the estimates that we got from the county, will maintain our current melody.
Zero increase in the melody, just to be there.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the budget hearing notice and schedule the public hearing for the twenty-nineteen budget amendments and the twenty-twenty budget for Monday, August twelfth, twenty nineteen.
Second? Move consecutive questions, concerns, comments. I'd be very glad to. Sir?
Very. Great job.
There's been a wonderful job done on this. I want to make sure that people who are not competent with computers, like I contend not to be, uh, will have a paper copy of this without having to go by, you know, the city hall and, oh, may I have a paper copy of this?
Of the hearing notice?
No, the, the all of numbers thing.
Yes, they can get one at city hall from the city clerk.
Could we have some here?
Oh, yeah, we can.
I just think it would be a really good idea. And is it in this room?
Yes, it'll be at the regular council meeting on the clock.
This is a small room.
There usually are.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we're not going to be packed.
All right, got it. I just want to make sure that people have that, you know, we who are kinetic learners would make the difference.
Sir?
Yeah.
Um, would we be able to work one of these from UG? I mean, or could you guys teach UG how to make one of these for us? Slightly being smart, I like with.
The budget hearing notice?
Yeah. Oh, well, the budget general with how UG wastes their money, sort of spends their money.
Yeah.
I'm just being smart. I'd like to make free time.
Thanks, Tim. That's what we do. Do a good job.
Seeing nothing else, vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Um, not to belabor the point, but it's my understanding the unified government is not increasing their, uh, the, the information that I have gathered so far for the county or for the city. Well, just the same. Finally, that concludes our agenda. Uh, now onto our reports, the first of which is city manager's report.
Just a little thing to kick us off. It wasn't in my revenue report, but it's one of these little things that happens that I think is just, you know, good to keep you guys in the public inform. If you go up to the library now, the staff there have actually been fitted with, uh, hard words say, ergonomic, there we go, chairs. Um, those are actually funded through the city's risk management fund that the city council set aside. So the city, um, actually was able to recoup about three thousand dollars is what it took for each one of those chairs. Um, but again, just a good thing for city staff, library staff to have access to that and show you guys in public that we are using that money and at the same time helping mitigate any risk. Um, obviously a lot of time in chairs. And then also I made mention of this last, um, meeting, but I want to bring it up again just to give some of the commentary related to the budget on the city for two thousand and nineteen, our current year budget received. This is the second time in a row the GFOA's distinguished budget presentation award. Um, this is a document that gets, gets put together. I can't remember. It's about a hundred and some pages in length, um, but basically details, um, all the, um, policies, the financial plan, the operation guide, then ultimately a communication sort of device for the public to see how our operations are being financed. So again, this is the second time this has happened and this is a, a really difficult thing to do. It's, um, not a lot of places to get this. So I just want to say thanks to Tilly too. Um, part of the reason we're able to receive this is because we have really good books. So, um, thank you for her. Also as a reminder, Tiffle Days is quickly approaching, kicking off on Thursday, August twenty-second. Um, just a reminder, the council members to get with Chris if you are planning to be part of the parade. And then also the mayor's banquet is at Thursday as well. Um, again, just as a reminder. And then lastly, just wanted to note, we did, um, post our consumer confidence report. We have talked a lot about our water supply, um, with this budget cycle and some need for some upgrades in that realm. But want to make mention that we do annually put together a consumer confidence report, which covers, um, last year, the testing that we do. So that is available at bonnersprings.org. Um, with that, happy to answer any questions with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we'll go ahead and have the council, city council items. Um, I believe we're starting over here with Councilman Shannon.
Sean, Tilly, this is, uh, this has your name all over on this award. I especially, and I know I can speak for everybody who really appreciate the quality, the professionalism and the way you made all of you handle everything. I greatly appreciate it.
Second, those thoughts as well. Tilly, always gotten answered for every wild goofy question I've got, so I greatly appreciate it. Um, one thing I have to, is probably Sean is, are we, are we using the cars, the police cars that don't have the stickers on it yet already?
Police cars, we have been using the Durango, have been, the chief has been using that just as a, um, kind of driving it. Um, part of that is to just fill that vehicle out. It's the first time that we've bought a Durango, um, that type of chassis of Durango. And that came out, you know, really briefly. Ford makes a line of police, uh, vehicles called the interceptor model. Those cars went up quite a bit with the chassis remodel. Those cars went up quite a bit with the chassis remodeled, they went to aluminum frame, so the cost went up about $10,000, I think. So a lot of places have started to look at alternatives. Again, you'll see a lot of agency with chargers, because again, that's the cost for, of control there. So we do have, to answer your question, we do have the Durango, we're starting to just kind of use that, that hasn't been outfitted yet.
It runs radar?
Hasn't been running right now. Um, so we have been, had to find out. So that's just kind of being used to, again, figure out all the things we need to put into it. I don't think that we've had any other police vehicles for this purchase that have come in yet to this point.
Okay, well, and that was, as Danny mentioned, that's why I was asking, are they running radar with those, or?
So we do have unmarked vehicles. So we do have, oh, we have, I can't remember how many in total, but we do have a certain number of unmarked vehicles, one of which does run radar. They all, I think, at most are running radar. There's a few detective vehicles. There's one with, well, they're undercover sort of, ones with light bars are installed in the interior and things like that. So that's probably what you're seeing, not the Durango that I alluded to.
Yeah.
That one will stand out with, with the sticker on the back that says that we have to get it licensed, so.
Well, my question with that was, sort of a question, is basically why? I know that, and the reason I say that, is I know that one of our community questionnaire things was that we wanted police officers that looked like police officers, and I had gotten a bunch of questions about it from random people from my ward, as well as, I got a ticket the other day, parking ticket, and the guy just told me that he gave it to me because, right, I was parked the wrong way. But he, and I was in front of Third Street Coffee, but he literally said, I'm giving this to you in front of Third Street Coffee, to set an example. I'm like, you're in an unmarked car? And I didn't understand the point. I mean, if they need help finding drug houses, I can tell them where three are and they haven't busted yet. And the reason I say that is several of the people in that coffee shop brought it up to me, and went, why aren't they getting parking tickets, which I told the officers, I appreciate it, I understood it. I was doing the wrong thing or whatever, but essentially, like, we need to see the cop cars. I, and that's just my concern with it, is that I like to say that I appreciate seeing the cars that are marked, especially at night, or if I'm in rentals and stuff. It has helped, because I'll see different areas or houses that I know that have activity, they don't do stuff as much. When the cars are driving around, they're marked. It's just a concern I've got, just putting it out there, thanks for listening, right?
Just so you're, everybody's aware, so we have different functions of each of the vehicles, most, all agencies do. So our unmarked cars are predominantly utilized for traffic enforcement, for obvious reasons. If you see a cop car on, set on the way and you're speeding, you're gonna slow down, that thing. So we try to be a little bit more cognizant of that reality. Again, the, the cars, if you see that are marked, have been, been done so in a way that I think is very obvious that they are police cars.
Of course.
They're white and black, traditional, they also have the lights. But again, each one of those cars, just like the K-9 vehicle, has a specific function to it to make it the most effective that it can be. Again, we also use those cars for undercover work, again, I alluded to the detective cars if they're unmarked, again, for obvious reasons, so that if you do, if you do have to deal with drug enforcement issues
Yeah.
that can be done in a way that is discreet, so that we can obviously build a case to act on those things, which is part of the issue, is that you process a portion of this, and you have to have the case before we can execute.
As we can't go breaking in doors, I try to respect that part. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes.
Sir. As a follow-up to the community needs survey, I just wanted to report that the ministers, local ministers and Andy's leading the way on this, are looking and really trying to tie in with these needs. An example of that is the chaplains for the police departments. One of the goals was to support the local law enforcements or first responders and people in their, the churches are coming in, they're looking for recruiting chaplains for Edwardsville Police Department and Bonner Springs. And that's a wonderful thing, because, uh, the reason I bring this up is, it's not just the local congregations, take, go back and look at that, anybody can tie into the needs of the community, there, there are different examples. And for a chaplain to be there, I'll never forget my first time on a death notification as a police officer. It's horrible. It's horrible. And to have somebody there, I was also on that side as a military chaplain and a hospital chaplain. So I see the value of that, and that's a wonderful step that they're doing, and I really applaud them on that. And, but they're moving forward with this, it's really, really exciting to see this, so I wanted to just follow up with that.
Great. Thank you.
That is wonderful, yeah. I wanna appreciate, I just wanna appreciate everybody answering my silly questions about the budget. Sniper, sniper supplies and shit, yeah.
Can we hear what the mayor's thinking will be helping shoot? They will get, oh, that's what we're ready.
At high school, one month from tonight, get your tickets now.
Tilly and Sean, I'm gonna dub that the guffalo of the word, so congratulations on that again. Jordan and I have asked you to go ahead and turn those drug houses in anyway, if you might, if you know what, right?
As Sean said, there's due process, they've asked you to go ahead and kick the doors in.
Not you personally, just tell them.
Yep.
Sean, I appreciate the development thing, can we get the schedule of the government service center, just highlight dates, I mean, it's the biggest project we've ever done, it's exciting, it's neat, I just, I, I'm not down there daily, you guys see it all the time, I'd love to just know when, we're doing what, celebrate it, you know? We're gonna come with a bill at some point, so might as well tell them how great it's gonna be.
They've already come with the first bill, I think. Yeah, I, I've kind of waited on getting the schedule, just so everybody knows, they, they have been providing a short-term schedule, but with some of these unknown factors, and now that they've finally gotten the site clear on the lower section here, one of the complicating factors has been utility coordination at this point. Like Amber alluded to earlier, this area, we didn't realize that that was gonna have to be as cumbersome as it's gonna have to be. But there is a lot of utility that is going into this, called alleyway between, hopefully the police department and, and city hall. We will have a progress meeting, we've been doing those twice, or every two weeks, excuse me, so we should have one next week, I'll have a schedule, I'll try to get that in for the meeting in August, so you guys can just generally see what their staging looks like now, and I think it's a little more concrete than it was last week.
Yeah, and it's stuff at very high levels, like
Oh, yeah.
They're gonna maybe do this, and subject to change, but
Yep.
even if it's Facebook or whatever on there.
Yeah, 'cause that's, that, I mean, it's, I could give you the schedule, it's pretty, it's probably not, that's where you put, it's a pretty hard schedule in terms of what's all in it. Right now, they're in that sort of, a process.
I got the high points that the general public might be
Yes, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Have we still got the old hammers? The lead hammers?
I said, what's the, the section of crap you're building that?
You don't think that I've said about tonight?
We're waiting for your next comment.
Yeah, along with what Kip said, just, any idea when groundbreaking might be tentatively at this point?
Well
For, yeah, for the groundbreaking ceremony, I guess.
I think that for the groundbreaking ceremony, what we were waiting for was, was removing a lot of the sights, so the backdrop was a little more impressive. So we're sort of at that point right now. Again, one thing that's been complicating the schedule has been the access to this, so they can't actually start to work in terms of going vertical on the police department until they take out the retaining wall here, or they can't take the retaining wall out until they have the access into the senior center and the meeting rooms here. So again, that's, that's probably another month or so, and then we're also working with Westar to relocate some power poles that are coming in and feeding this facility, just so we can kind of go to work. So probably Friday is when it's starting.
Maybe this week instead of a hundred, I should do it this week.
Yeah.
Who is the person on the pole out there in effigy with the
I just hope it's not the mayor. It did look a lot like me.
Straight, straight across on that pole.
Somebody go up there.
They have a shirt like I saw you have on.
I've already been accused of, or not, they've already suggested it.
Just wait, you know, I, I screwed up, I'm, I'm still marching. Yeah, high hole on, make a pond measure, avoid the west front of the devil to down the hill, and there's, I think there's two, there's, there's one that's abandoned in particular.
Wanted to throw up that Sean deserves a, a kudos for going backwards with Westar, as mentioned, even when we were in our tour, that they were mentioning charging us 200 grand to move those poles, and Sean reminded them of our contract, that shouldn't cost us anything. Here, it's good that our staff is going back towards and watching, watching our backs.
And our wallets.
Very good. All right, very good, onto my report. I really appreciate all of your input tonight, there were a lot of issues that needed to be discussed, and they were, they were brought up and discussed very well, so I appreciate all your, but I know some of the development issues are difficult to consider the full impact, and we do have a history of being very cooperative, and will continue to be very cooperative for our community, surrounding communities, and I think that's one of our strengths. We've all, during my time in office, the more we have cooperated with our surrounding communities, the better it's been for Bonner Springs. So we'll try, I, the best I can, we'll try to continue that. Along with that cooperation comes the best interests of our citizens of our community, we have to watch out for that. So we have to make sure that we look out for our needs and our community's needs, and we'll continue to do that.
Yes, sir. Just in the spirit of that really quickly, I was your miss to mention it, I think we've all heard the, the going-ons with Leavenworth County, the sand plant that's going on there. It's my understanding that a request is being made to redo another traffic study at that location. I have reached out to county administrator for Leavenworth, this asset, if that is to be completed, that the traffic engineer or consultant, whomever, does reach out to us so that we can also kind of take a look at the impact of that, wherever is being planned, assuming with K-32, again, if I make sure, just in the spirit of the cooperation, if you guys are aware, that do, we have open to the lines of communication, and are trying to do, at least get Bonner Springs considered as, as part of what this development will mean to this community.
Because some of the, some of the manner in which our communications were interpreted by their different departments wasn't quite as accurate as what had happened. So the city staff has been very good at trying to clarify with their staff the particulars, and so I appreciate that on all the different levels. I know, again, we want to cooperate and watch out for our community as well as all of ours. I also wanted to thank Tilly and, and Sean, we don't even realize what a, this wonderful award this GFOA, or GFOA, the GFOA award, that's pretty significant. It's a bar by which a lot of communities are measured, and that you'll have to go a long way before we find someone else that has had the great fortune of being awarded that two years in a row. I greatly appreciate also this year, we won't, won't have an impact on our mill levy. We planned, as we started the government services center improvements here in downtown Bonner, that we would have to do a multi-year step on our mill levy. And the way, through the different options we've had with financing, as well as the staging of the project, has enabled us to expand the impact and, and take it over a larger period of time. So this year, we won't have any, not impact on our mill levy, not to expect that that might not be the case next year. We continue to see savings because of our constant contact and our vigilance, not only from our city staff, but our city council, but also through the financial bond situations that we've continued to have favor with. So hopefully, the situation will continue to go down this road, but do not think that we can rest on our rules. Right now, it's projected that we could expect a two-mill to three-mill increase for the project next year. So, and that's scheduled, that's, that's, that's not a surprise, that's, that's part of what our original plan was. So it's just the impacts being spread over a long period of time because of some of our financial and the bond concerns that we've been fortunate with. Other than that, we all, we all are preparing for TIBLO days, that's a wonderful, it is wonderful, it's a wonderful thing. So be sure you help the city staff as much as you can and get into them if you need any assistance with writing in the parade. The parade will be, again, another epic parade. Please encourage everyone to participate as much as you can, and follow the rules on how that's done. This mayor's banquet will be on Thursday evening this year, huge change, I know, but we're so flexible here at Bonner Springs, that shouldn't be a problem. The city band is playing on Friday night in the entertainment area, and, which is a big change also this year, hopefully it will over by Centennial Park instead of the The ba, the car show is, planning for the car show is well underway, those of you who'd like to display your custom cruiser in the car show, please contact Matt Beetz, it's, it also will be a wonderful opportunity. I don't believe they're having a barbecue this year. Yeah, so the smell that that brings, we may have to encourage private.
Oh, that's right, neighbors.
Yeah, all neighbors, turn up their smokers. The carnival looks forward to this event every year, it will also be an impact on Bonner Springs, so I ask everybody's cooperation and patience with that. Other than that, I don't have anything else to do to, to report, and stand for questions. Seeing none, Marder.